Good afternoon and welcome to Mastermind 911 with Sarita. Today, um, I wanted to talk about a video that has been um, spouting around on YouTube and I pretty much just ran up on this video on tonight. Um, scrolling, looking for something and I saw this and I just wanted to give my thoughts and opinion on um, what I think about uh, this video, but first, oh, well, not about the video, but about the book. But first, we're gonna take a look at um, what the pastor had to say and then I'm gonna give my thoughts on this. So let's, let's start. Okay, let's see. I'm gonna move myself out of the way.
Teaching graphic sex acts, complete with illustrations, making the rounds in school libraries and classrooms across the country, leaving parents and communities outraged. One concerned pastor tried to read the book at a school board meeting, but officials asked him to stop. Here's what he had to say about that.
If you don't want to hear it in a school board meeting, why should children be able to check it out of the school system? You see, we have perverts that are perverting our kids. And you all sit back smug in your chairs and celebrate diversity, equity, and inclusion, but you don't want me to read it so you can hear it?
Reverend John Emenchukwu spoke at that school board meeting and he joins me now. Reverend, thank you so much for being here. They did not let you talk about the book, but I will. What's in this book?
This book is for children 10 years of age and up. This book is not soft porn, it's hardcore porn. It details explicitly with pornographic images, homosexual sex, lesbian sex, um, straight sex. It promotes and glorifies masturbation while speaking against religion to may call that behavior a sin. This book is used as a tool to create what I call mental rape in the hearts and the minds of children. We are robbing kids of their innocence in America as we allow diversity, inclusion, and equity to dominate our schools. And so many of our librarians are bringing this kind of material into the public school system because they believe that children need to see themselves on the shelf. I don't believe that this is perfectly normal. I believe that this is perfectly perverted and it needs to stop.
Great point. You got to the point that I wanted to focus on and it's the why. I want to extrapolate on that. Why? Why are we forcing a book like this on 10-year-olds?
Well, you know, there's this issue of acceptance today. You know, when it comes to inclusion, we have to make sure that everyone's welcome, everyone's invited. Uh, we have to make sure everyone feels good. And so along with that comes bringing in pornographic material to show kids about homosexual sex, lesbian sex, gay sex, transgenderism, and all of these things that come along with the alphabet mafia. And so I'm against these things because parents should talk about these things at home. If a parent wants to talk about masturbation and be explicit with their children and show them pornographic images, I don't advise it. I don't think it's something that they should do, but that should be something that takes place at home. But when we rob kids of their innocent, we're leading innocence, we're leading them down a slippery slope. This book is welcomed in the public school system, but if a teacher were to begin to talk from this book, the Bible, everyone would be up in arms. Listen, we are in a bad place in America. America is spiraling downward and it's time to storm the cockpit. As we talk about gender theory and queer theory and we turn these schools woke, our children are underperforming. Our students aren't reading on grade level. Um, they're not doing math on grade level. Our achievement rates are down. It's time to get back to education and not indoctrination.
This isn't just happening in Asheville, North Carolina where you spoke. Parents are fighting back against this at schools throughout the nation. We reached out to a number of them. Some wrote back. The Bonnie Eagle School District in Maine, they have this book. They had no comment. Asheville Board of Education where you spoke says, "Parents have a right under federal law to inspect all instructional and supplementary materials as part of any applicable federally funded programs." And the Waldorf School in Long Island telling us, quote, "The book in question is an optional supplementary resource for parents that has never been used in the classroom." Reverend, is it safe to say that parents cannot let their guard down for one second when it comes to what is being taught in their kids' schools?
No, but parents, you can't let your guard down for one second. There are sexually evil and corrupt and deviant, perverted people who believe that this is okay. And so this is how it works. They bring the pornography into the school system. They bring in these gender theory and queer theory books. And if parents don't know it's there, it remains there. And then when parents are told that it's there, then the parents have to go through 10-step processes to get the books removed. This is sinister. It's criminal. It's child abuse. And so I'm going to school boards around the country. If you want to support my efforts, you can go to erasedbook, that's E-R-A-C-E-D-book.com and support the work that I'm doing nationally. We need pastors. We need the church to rise up and to speak up against this evil that's been done to our children. And we need men in particular in the culture to be bold and to be courageous. Stop being neutered and use your voice to defend our families and our children.
This push to ruin the innocent years of being a child is not perfectly normal. Reverend John Emenchukwu, we appreciate your insight. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Oh. If you'll let me drag it. Oh, hold on. No one, I can't. Okay. So. Um. As we know, that when it comes to children, children are near and dear to God's heart. And that's why the Bible tells us to come subject as little children because little children are innocent. Their minds, um, you know, they can be fighting one minute and the next minute, you know, they write back to, um, playing together. And the enemy knows this. I have a scripture here. Um, Matthew 18:20 that says, "Be careful that you don't look down on one of these little ones." I say to you that their angels in heaven are always looking into the face of my Father, who is in heaven. The good news, "Do not look down on children, for they are the future." Okay, so this is why the enemy is after our kids. Because um, the Bible tells us, Jesus told us in Matthew 18:20, that the children are the future. So, um, in order to, um, in order for Satan to not, um, to not, to get what he need, well, not to not, but to get what he needs to be done, then the first thing is to mess with our children's mind. The Bible tells us in Proverbs 4:23, um, that the mind is the heart, right? And so if, if I can mess with your mind, then the mind is the whole body. And actually, let's go to that because I like to give scripture for anything that I do, um, I back it up with scripture. Let's go to Proverbs 4:23. Like, this is very sickening. Like, um, we know that God, um, talks about having sex outside of marriage, first of all. So, um, to, to pervert our kids and to get them to do, uh, or to sin against God, the first thing I'm gonna do is go after their mind. So if I can trick you into doing what I need you to do, then you can, um, you can have babies out of wedlock, which goes against God's plan for, um, our lives. You can have sex outside of marriage, which goes against God's plan for our lives. So the, the whole point of it all is to throw it in God's face, basically. And remember that we are not fighting flesh and blood. We're fighting spiritual weakness, rulers of darkness, principalities, powers in high places. So we are not fighting, uh, people. The, this is a spirit that we're fighting. And so, um, in order to fight a spirit, we have to allow the Holy Spirit to do it for us. We cannot fight on our own. "This battle is not ours," says the Lord. "This battle is not ours. It belongs to the Lord." And so this battle that we're in, um, it didn't just start. This battle started in heaven when, um, Satan wanted to take over and he wanted to, um, he wanted to be God. And God told him that you can be the small g, but you'll never be the big G, right? And so, um, Satan got lifted up in pride because he start seeing himself as, you know, I'm this and I'm that. And he got lifted up in pride and so God kicked him, um, out of heaven and into the second heaven. And where his angels, which was the third of the angels, and him resides now until, uh, judgment day. And so, um, this battle did not just start. Satan wanted to ruin from the beginning. Because when we deal with things, we have to start, um, from the beginning so that we can see like really what we are fighting with, really what we are, what we, what we need to tackle, what we need to pray for. And so this is a spiritual fight. It's not a, uh, it's not a natural fight. It's a spiritual fight when it comes to, um, any of us, not just our kids, but any of us. This is a spiritual fight. But mostly our kids because the Bible just said to us, they are the generation. They are, they are the future. They are the future. And so, um, to mess up what God wants to do, uh, when it comes to having babies, number one, like we know two men cannot have babies, two women cannot have babies together. Um, it takes a man and a woman to have a baby. And so if I can get you to, uh, think otherwise, then you know, and it is, it's all about the mind. So let's, let's go to, like I said, Proverbs 4:23. It says, "Keep thy heart with all diligence, for out of it are the issues of life." Out of it are the issues of life. So let's see what kind of issues that it's talking about. Let's go to my, um, my Blue Bible app. We're gonna go to Proverbs 4:23. Um. Issues mean outgoing border, a going out, extreme to end source, escape, outgoing source of life. Well, that is not really giving me what I need. But the issues of life that it talks, that it's talking about is like, um, sin. That's pretty much what it's talking about. It's talking about sin and, um, sin starts in the heart of man. The heart is the mind that God is talking about. And you can read it for yourself and get the understanding for yourself. But right here it says, um, "Heart could often be translated mind in the book. Since the Hebrews had no separate word for mind, the word heart often serves to represent the seat of the intellect." The key to the whole man is his mind. There you go. Whatever captures the mind, captures the man. So the first thing Satan does is goes after the mind. And so when he goes after the mind, the first thing he do is, um, he gotta get you to like take a look at what he's trying to do. So once you start taking a look at what he's trying to do, then he gets you to agree. You start agreeing. Y'all come in agreement. There's a, there's a, um, uh, an agreement that is made between you and him. And so once the agreement is made, then, um, there goes the plot, the plan and the schemes. And this is what Satan do. He, he don't, he don't fight fair. He use our weaknesses against us. And so children's minds are innocent. Children's minds are innocent. And they're not thinking about anything like this, like, um, um, the only, like, you can learn, you can, a child is teachable. A child is teachable. And so you can teach them anything and the enemy knows this, that you can teach a child how, what you want them to be, how you want them to be, how you want them to think. Like, we know that this world, this world has nothing, it says no good things come from this world. Nothing good come from this world. So when we allow the world to teach our kids, they are teaching them their ways of how they want them to be. Um, it's basically training a person to get them, uh, to be what you want them to be. And that's why we send our kids to school to learn, not to, um, know about all this other stuff because as the pastor say, if we want our kids to know these things, we would tell our kids our fails. It's better coming from the parent's mouth than coming from an outsider mouth because they're not gonna tell you like, if I raise my kids up to know the Lord. And so because I raised my kids up to know the Lord, I don't want nobody talking to them about sex or about anything contrary to the word of God. Um, do I tell my kids about sex? Yes, because now my kids are old enough and I want them to understand, you know, what this life, uh, would do to you. This life will throw you under the bus and not care. And so, um, you know, I tell them, um, the word way, that we're not supposed to have sex outside of marriage. It's against God. And you know, we, we go to the scriptures and everything like that. But if the world tell our kids that, um, you know, about sex, they're gonna tell you it's okay. And why is okay? And that's what they're doing. Um, because this world is full of sin. The curse of Adam and Eve, that's where the sin started from. So because this world is full of sin, they think it's okay. Because in their mind, this is how they too was, um, done. Like, these people have some issues, like really. These people really have some issues. The one, the ones that is pushing this agenda, they really have some issues because if you really look at it, what normal human being, normal, normal human being would think this way, would, would, would wanna push a book of such like this on a child? What normal, this is, this lets you know that this is nothing normal. This is nothing human that we are dealing with. This is a spirit that we're dealing with. And so this is where the saints of God cannot get caught up in their flesh, where we have, we have to be able to see spiritually and spiritually discern what we're dealing with. And so the Holy Spirit can show us how to deal with these things. Because if we get caught up in our feelings about this stuff, then guess what? That's what they want. That's all they want. So then, you know, you go in your flesh, going up in the school and you telling somebody all thing, you know, all this, that and the other. And you know, you're not getting anywhere because it is not the person that you're fighting with. This is, this is a spiritual warfare that we're fighting. And so we're gonna, we're gonna fight this battle the right way. We're gonna fight the right way. We're gonna allow God to fight for us because guess what? Nobody is to come against his children. Nobody. When you come against his children, you're coming against him. And so, um, that's my point of view on it, that, you know, Satan has to, you know, he, the first thing he come out, come out for is your character, is, um, because he don't want you to know who you is. That's the, that's the way to not for you to know who you is, is for you to, um, go against who God created you to be. Simple as that. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna push my agenda and I'm gonna tell you that it's okay for you to do this, for you to be this, when God specifically says in his word, word, Romans 1, and you can go and read it for yourself when it talks about man, man, um, actually, let's not put it up. I talked about this earlier today, but I'm gonna put it in this video too. Let's start at 18. It says, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men who hold the truth in unrighteousness. Because that which may be known of God is manifest in them, for God has shown it unto them." So they know what they're doing pretty much. "For the invisible things of him from the creation of the world are clearly seen, being understood by the things that are made, even his eternal power and Godhead, so that they are without excuse." They already know who God is. They know what he stand for. "Because that, when they knew God, they glorified him, not as God, neither were thankful, but became vain in their imagination, and their foolish heart was darkened. Professing themselves to be wise, they became fools and changed the glory of the uncorruptible God into an image made like to corruptive man and to birds and four-footed beasts and creeping things. Wherefore God also gave them up to uncleanness through the lust of their hearts to dishonor their own bodies between themselves, who changed the truth of God into a lie and worship and serve the creature more than the Creator, who is blessed forever a man. For this cause, God gave them up into vile affections, for even their women did change the natural use into that which is against nature. And likewise, all men leaving the natural use of women burn in their lusts one towards another, men with men working that which is unseemly and receiving in them themselves that recompense of their error, which was met. And even as they did not like to retain God in their knowledge, God gave them over to a reprobate mind to do things which are not convenient. Being filled with all unrighteousness, fornication, wickedness, covetousness, maliciousness, full of envy, murder, debate, deceit, malignity, whispers, bad biders, haters of God, despiteful, proud, bolsters, inventors of evil things, there you go, inventors of evil things, disobedience to parent, without understanding, covenant breakers, there you go, without natural affection, implacable, unmerciful, who knowing the judgment of God, that they which commit such things are worthy of death, not only, not only do the same, but have pleasure in them, them that do them." So, um, they, they be out here recruiting. That's what the Bible is talking about. They be out here recruiting, seeing who they can get on their team. Um, and so even if it's innocent babies, they, that's what they wanna do. They wanna be the biggest of all. So they will recruit anybody, any, any person that will come along and say, yeah, what you're doing is correct, what you're doing is good. Knowing good time well, they know that is not good. But you know, their time is coming. Their time is coming and you know, um, the Bible said, he wished, God said, "He wished no man would perish but have everlasting life and have more abundance." But, um, the wicked gonna perish. The Bible talks about that. Like, it is not God who causes a man to, um, to, um, perish, but it is the man himself, his own way of thinking, his own, um, knowledge and understanding and concept of things. And it causes him, he calls himself to, um, to perish. And so, um, you know, like I said, we have to keep a level head about this and know that God, um, is omnipresent, omnipotent, omnip science. He's all-know and all-powerful and he's everywhere. So what we don't see, he see what we don't hear, he hear and he's there. So he's looking and listening and he's everywhere. So nobody gets away with anything. Nobody. And so, uh, would God stand back and just allow, um, them to hurt his, um, innocent children? No. No. Um. Sooner than later, the wrath of God, they shall see the wrath of God if they don't repent for what, uh, for their sin. Um, and so this is my intake and, you know, um, from the beginning, I was saying, "Let's pray for our kids," but nobody said a thing. And now since it's here, now everybody wanna say something, but you know, um, it's, 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 it's okay because, uh, God has the last say so with everything. But like I said, let's just stay level-headed. Let's not give in to what they want us to do. You know, um, they want us to retaliate in our flesh, in our own way. But remember, um, who we serve and we serve the person that created the universe, that created the children, that created them. And so, um, the Bible said, "He's more than the whole world against us." He's more than the whole world against us. And so, um, great is he that's in you than he's, he that's in the world. It's nothing that Satan can do. He has to have permission to do whatever he do. But, um, it's time for the church. I agree that it's time for the church to come together on one accord and to, to, um, you know, speak out like we're doing, sharing it on our platforms and things like that. But also, um, getting together, you know, um, doing some, doing some things like coming together and uniting. Because the church is, um, separate and they know this. The, the church is separated and they know this. They know that, um, um, if they can keep us apart, if the enemy know if they can keep, if he can keep us separated, then you know, we have no strength because he said unity brings strength. He said, "One can put a thousand in flight, two or more can put 10,000 and more to flight." We're, we're stronger together than separate. So I say, yes, let's come together and do something, you know, um, about this, you know, when it comes to these schools because it is outrageous. It's outrageous. It's, 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 I really have no words. Um, I'm beyond words that to, that I have to say concerning this book and what, you know, um, the agenda that they're trying to push. But like I said, staying level-headed, we have to know that this is nothing normal. It's nothing normal and that we're not fighting flesh and blood. It's spiritual weakness, rulers of darkness, principalities, powers in high, high places. So it's time to suit up. It's time to put on the full armor and it's time to fight the right way. We have been fighting the wrong way, but it's time to fight the right way. It's time to fight the right way. And, uh, once we, you know, get together on one accord. And, uh, once we, you know, get together on one accord, like the day of Pentecost, God will work, God will work. He said, "If my children, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray, seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven and hear, hear their land." So, you know, God is waiting for us. He's waiting for us to get it together, to get it together. Trust me, there won't be any harm come to our kids at all. Not any harm come to our kids. Um, the ones that, uh, it is happening to, the, the parents are exposing their kids to this, uh, particular thing. Because if it was me as a parent and it was in my children's school, my children would not be going to that school. You do not have to allow your kids to go places where, um, you know that something is not right there. Like, you know, this is where we have to totally lean and depend on God. Trust God for what we need, you know, to take care of, um, like, if we need to come up with schools and, uh, um, kingdom schools and things like that for our kids to be safe and, you know, uh, protected, then that's what we need to do. But, um, I as a parent, my child would not be in that particular school. So those, those innocent kids that are being exposed to it is because the parents are exposing them to it. The, these parents these days, some of them don't care about their kids. Like, you know, they just stand by and they allow their kids to be attacked and, um, to be, um, you know, talk anything. And it's because, like I said, it's, um, uh, chastisement starts in the home. And so if you're not raising your kids right at home, so, you know, in school, you're not gonna think anything about what they doing, because chastisement start at home. The Bible said, raise a kid, ki- uh, child up in the way they should go, and they will not depart from it. So it starts, charity starts at home. It starts at home, love starts at home. And so when you raise your kids up to know the Lord and to know right from wrong, trust me, your kids ain't gonna wanna stay in there either. They gonna, they gonna know right from wrong, they gonna know that's not right. If, if a child is able to be taught about lesbianism and things like that at that age, they can be taught about love and talk about, talk about God at this age too as well. So we have to do better as parents and, you know, um, teach our children about, uh, God and what, um, God, uh, the plan that God has for them, because it's a plan for all of our life. Jeremiah 23:11, it's a plan that God has for all of our life. He took the time and created us, you know, created this blueprint and created us and, and made us in his image and in his likeness. And so anything that goes contrary or against that, we know it's not God, and we know that we're, we're fighting with, um, spirits. But anyway, y'all, please like this video, um, share this video if, if you find something good that, you know, that helped you, comment on this video. Turn on your bell notifications, and until next time, I'll be talking to you guys later. Bye.